I'd like to call this meeting of the Peoria Planning and Zoning Commission Order. Welcome, everyone, to who's watching tonight's meeting remotely as we adhere to social distancing guidelines to ensure everyone's safety. While I'm the only one here behind the dais, we have other members of the commission joining us by phone tonight. To see who's on the line, we're going to begin with a roll call. Vice Chair Jay Otlowski.
Yes, President.
Secretary Brian Patterson.
Present.
Commissioner Sean Hutchinson.
To ensure everyone's safety.
Commissioner Sean Hutch—
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Linda Grace.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Clay Alsop.
Present.
And finally, Commissioner Tony Fighter.
Present.
Thank you, and Chair is obviously present. I'd like to read an opening statement to begin tonight's meeting. This commission is composed of Peoria citizens who've been appointed by the City Council to serve on the commission as a civic responsibility without compensation. Our duty is to study and review planning and zoning issues within the city of Peoria. The commission hears zoning cases, holds public hearings, or may conduct a study session on a topic. Decisions made by the commission are forwarded as written recommendations to the City Council, who takes final action. Due to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, which have prompted declarations of a public health emergency at the city, county, state, and federal levels, this April 9, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be conducted using measures to protect public health. Consequently, tonight's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held remotely through technological means, as permitted under Arizona law. Specifically, public access to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is restricted in order to prevent a large or close gathering of the members of the public to promote social distancing. Please advise there will be no call to the public during tonight's meeting. While members of the public are not permitted to attend the meeting in person, they are encouraged to listen to the meeting remotely by viewing the meeting via the live stream broadcast at Facebook at City of Arizona—I'm sorry, excuse me—Facebook at City of Peoria AZ, or YouTube at Digital Peoria. In addition to viewing online, Peoria residents may also view the meeting live on Cox Channel 11 or CenturyLink Channel 8509. These measures are in place to limit the need for members of the public to participate in large public gatherings while ensuring that the discussions, deliberations, and actions of the Planning and Zoning Commission are transparent and conducted openly. Should members of the public have comments or questions regarding tonight's agenda, we ask that they submit them in email to planning@peoriaazgov. Comments that were received by the department prior to this meeting tonight will be read under the record during the respective agenda item. All hearings are conducted in accordance with the Rules for Procedures and Robert's Rules of Order. Each case will be called in the order in which it appears in the agenda unless otherwise announced during the meeting. And in the interest of maintaining a fair and efficient hearing, the commission will adhere to the following steps. Chair will open the case. City staff will then provide a brief report and recommendation. The applicant is then invited to give a presentation. The chair will read the submitted testimony provided by the public in advance of the meeting. After all of the testimony has been taken, we'll invite the applicant back up to provide any rebuttal or final statements. Finally, we have the—we will have the commission discussion and decision. Any member of the public may appeal to the City Council the decision of the commission regarding a conditional use permit. The appeal must be submitted in writing to the Planning and Community Development Department within 15 calendar days of the date of the commission's decision. All commission recommendations on public hearing items, including general plan amendments, rezones, zoning code amendments, and special plans, move forward to a regular City Council meeting. The City Council will then act on the recommendation of the commission. The City Council may concur with the decision, modify it, overturn it, or remand it back to the commission for further consideration. And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes the opening statement. Our first item of business tonight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is for items that are routine in nature and consist of three items tonight. We have Item 1C, disposition of absence; discussion of possible action to approve the absence of Secretary Brian Patterson from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on March 5, 2020. Item 2C, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on March 5, 2020. And Item 3C, QuickTrip, conditional use permit CU19-11, request for a conditional use permit to permit a new QuickTrip fuel service station with an associated convenience store on a property located at 7455 West Peoria Avenue. So we do things a little bit differently tonight, commissioners. I'm going to ask each of you whether you have any questions or comments about any of these consent agenda items before us tonight, and I'm going to be asking in a round robin manner. I'm going to start with Commissioner Otlowski. Do you have any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson. Well, I'm going to go on to Commissioner Hutchinson.
No questions, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace.
No questions.
Commissioner Alsop.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Fighter.
No questions. I'd just like to say that I'm excited about the reuse of that vacant Walgreens at that corner, so.
No questions.
No questions.
Great, thank you. Did I hear Commissioner Patterson say you have no questions? Commissioner Patterson, do you have any questions or comments on consent agenda? Can we continue? Did you hear? Yes, okay. All right, sounds like we're having a little bit of audio difficulties here, but I think we've heard from everyone. With that, I'm going to request a motion at this time, and to ensure we accurately capture who's making the motion, commissioners, please state your name, if you would, before making your motion. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
No questions. No questions.
Chair, this is John Hutchinson. I'm making the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. We have a motion to—
This is Tony Fighter. I'll make the second.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Fighter. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll now take a roll call vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioners, please respond with yea or nay. Commissioner Otlowski.
Yea.
Commissioner Patterson. Commissioner Patterson. Seem to be having difficulties with Commissioner Patterson's line. I'm going to—while we're figuring that, I'm going to move on. Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yea.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Commissioner Alsop.
Yes.
Commissioner Fighter.
Yea.
All right, and Chair votes aye as well. Do we try—Commissioner Patterson, can you hear us okay? Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
All right. How do you vote, yea or nay, on approving the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, thank you. And we have unanimous approval of the consent agenda. We're now going to move on to our regular agenda. We have four items before us tonight for discussion of possible action, all, as I understand, minor general plan amendments. We're going to begin with Item 4R, Arrowhead RV and Boat Storage. This is a minor general plan amendment, GPA 19-05 is the case number. We're considering amending the general plan land use map for approximately 21.1 acres from traditional residential, two to five dwelling units per acre, to the employment, business, commerce, land use designation. The site is located at 11150 West Beardsley Road—that's 11150 West Beardsley Road. The applicant has also submitted a companion application to rezone the property from Suburban Ranch SR43 to the proposed Arrowhead RV planned area development. However, that rezone request is still under review by city staff, and we consider it a future public hearing, yet to be determined should the requested general plan amendment be approved tonight. And with that, staff, please present your report.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is Chris Hockes. I'll go ahead and start, and then I'll turn it over to the staff. I wanted to make a few overarching remarks first, before we get into this particular case and the other ones that follow. As you noted, all of the cases tonight are on the regular agenda are minor general plan amendments. The items on the regular agenda, they're timely. A few were initiated by the city of Peoria, and a few were initiated by private parties. They pertain to last refinements proposed for the general plan. With your recommendation, these will then move forward to the April 21 City Council meeting for final action. On—a month later, on May 19, we will be asking the City Council to place the final version of the general plan on the November ballot. The final version of the general plan may or may not include these last refinements. It depends on how the actions go, obviously. After May 19, we're going to have what's called a blackout period until the November ballot. What that means—that means that we're not going to take any action on any general plan during that time, hence the need for the timing question that we have. As you know, typically, we have the general plan amendment and the rezone together on the same night. As you can see, given the timing issue, we allowed the general plan part of the item to move forward. So for those watching out in the public that may have an interest in the Arrowhead RV case or the Peoria Commons, I want to provide some clarity here. The general plan amendment establishes the underlying land use for this site. Do we want commercial? Do we want residential? That's what that establishes. The rezone, which is a separate case, that establishes the development standards and the development program, and in that sense, we get more into the detail. We look at things like traffic and access and setbacks and height requirements and so forth. So there are separate applications. So tonight, all we're looking at is the land use disposition of the property. I want to mention, though, that particularly for the Arrowhead RV and the Peoria Commons, they have separate rezone cases associated with them, and those are not ready to move forward for a public hearing. There's still—we understand there's still some questions that some of the public have, and there's time to address those questions. And so when those items are ready to move forward, they will be properly noticed, and they will come forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then City Council. So I just wanted to make sure that that was known. So with that, I wanted to go ahead and turn that over to Rick. He's going to present the first case.
Thank you, Chris, very much. Chairman, good evening, members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here before you this evening. Item 4R is a request by Jason Morris, Withy Morris, to amend the general plan land use map for approximately 21.1 acres of land located at 1150 West Beardsley Road. If I could direct your attention to the exhibit on the right, you can see outlined in red the subject site. It is an atypical configuration, and it stretches from Beardsley Road to the south, to Rosegarden Lane to the north, and it is bounded by 112th Avenue to the west, and essentially, the Ventana Lakes community to the west—or, I'm sorry, to the east. They are requesting a land use change from traditional residential to employment, business, commerce. Taking a little closer look at the site, the existing use on the subject site is the former Linden Tree Nursery. From a contextual standpoint, again, the subject site is outlined in red. To the north, you have a sand and gravel mining operation. A little east of that is state loaned in, actually, a couple of vacant parcels owned by the city of Peoria. To the west is a power line corridor, and then the Epcor wastewater treatment plant. South of the subject site is Beardsley Road, and then the city of Peoria Water Treatment Plant. And as I stated earlier, east of the site is the Ventana Lakes Residential Community. The existing category for the subject site is traditional residential, which generally provides for single-family residential at a density of two to five dwelling units per acre. The request this evening before council or commission is to amend that land use to the employment, business, commerce, which typically is business office, call centers, mini storage, research and development, industrial uses within a campus format that are typically low intensity and scale and—as well as land use consumptive. What you see before you—the now in this exhibit is the conceptual site plan that we have with the companion rezoning case as well. I thought it was appropriate to show this conceptual site plan so we could just give an overview of how the site is going to function as we're considering the land use appropriateness this evening. I'm going to start to the south of the site, which would be the left of the exhibit in front of you, and just note that that is Beardsley Road, which is also the main entrance of the proposed boat and RV storage facility. As some may know, there's an existing structure out there that was used as the office component for the existing nursery. That building's going to be converted and will become the—essentially, the administrative offices and the security offices for the proposed site. To the—move, and I guess it would be to the top of the—to the west, which is top on—up on this exhibit, that would be 112th Avenue, and you can see, essentially, those structures that are outlined in the hashed red, that would be the enclosed or garage-style portion of the proposed boat and RV storage, and that essentially is along the eastern or western edge of the proposed development. Now, the center of the development, you see another set of red and white hashes. That would be the covered RV parking, not totally enclosed, but a rooftop cover to provide shade for particular or potential customers. And then along the eastern edge—I'm sorry—to the right would be the northern edge, Rosegarden Lane, which you see a secondary entrance there as well. And then along the eastern portion of the development is an unimproved 111th Avenue, and a portion of the potential site, future site, that is non-covered, non-enclosed. Taking a look at it from an analysis standpoint, you know, and taking in the historical context, as we stated, you know, it was an existing, functioning nursery. It is an atypical-shaped parcel where it's approximately 300 feet at the southern edge and about 200 feet at the—at the northern edge. And you also have to take a look at the characteristics of the surrounding uses with respect to the Latin industrial mining operations, the water treatment plants to the west and to the south as well. With respect to the employment, business, commerce, land use category, typical zoning districts found within that zoning district are general commercial, regional commercial, and business parklight industrial, which is a boat and RV storage is a permitted use in that zoning district. But more importantly, we view that this site has the ability to provide a context-sensitive transitional area between the more intense land uses to the northwest and to the south and the Ventana Lakes community to the east. Continue along circulation main axis, as I stated, will be provided via Beardsley Road with secondary access, Rosegarden Lane. To the west, 112th Avenue essentially becomes the western boundary of the property, and as I previously stated, 111th Avenue, which is the eastern boundary of the property, is to remain undeveloped. There is a sewer easement that runs through the center of that city right-of-way that will require future maintenance from the city. With respect to transit and pedestrian connectivity, essentially, Beardsley Road will be improved with curb gutter sidewalk. That would serve as your pedestrian connection from Rosegarden Lane to Beardsley Road via, you know, bicycle or pedestrian. Connectivity within the site is really not anticipated or desired, certainly given the—you know, the nature of the proposed—proposed business on-site. And additionally, with this developed—development, there are no anticipated impacts on the existing transit in the area as well. From an education standpoint, the request actually reduces the amount of residential land in the area and therefore reduces the impact of educational facilities in the area. It's also considered a tier-one growth area, given its adjacency to the existing infrastructure. And I would note that the—the development is anticipated to be developed in a short-term fashion and will be served by existing infrastructure and other municipal services that are already servicing the area. With respect to conformance with the city's general plan, it meets several different goals within that plan. You know, it supports a robust and sustainable economy, and it really does promote the business-friendly city that Peoria is striving for. It also creates a balance of land uses and integrates a variety of compatible uses and establishes in neighborhoods and provides additional services for the local neighborhoods. But I think also it's important to note that it also, you know, protects existing residential areas from incompatible land uses, which, when you look at this from, you know, a compatibility standpoint, you really look at character, it really is a kind of a textbook case for meeting this requirement and creating this opportunity for buffering requirements. With respect to public outreach, notice of the application and hearing, postcards were mailed to owners within 600-foot radius, and all registered homeowners' associations within a one-mile radius. Illegal ad was published in the newspaper, and the site was posted in accordance with city requirements. A neighborhood meeting was held on February 6 of this year at the Sunrise Mountain Library, where approximately 11 individuals attended that meeting. Comments on—from the residents really focused on operational issues within the site itself with respect to traffic generation, hours of operation, 111th Avenue and security. So it really focused more on the—again, on the operationalities of it than specifically to the land use requests that's before us this evening. And I would just take a moment to reiterate what Mr. Hockes said earlier, and that is that, you know, there is a companion rezone case associated with this. We're in the process of addressing and discussing appropriate mitigation measures through the rezone case, and again, we'll be back before Planning Commission to discuss those operational characteristics and the mitigative measures that we're looking at as far as addressing that with the rezone case. With respect to traffic, the applicant stated clearly that the traffic counts and the traffic loads associated with this were, you know, significantly less than the existing plant nursery, and more specifically, less than what we would find in a typical residential neighborhood. They also provided data at this meeting that supported—from their sister facility here in the city of Peoria—that traffic counts are very low for these types of facilities, and they noted that a total of three trips between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM were noted on a major holiday weekend at the sister facility. The hours of operation and security was a topic of the meeting as well, and again, they stated that security is accessible on the site, not only via personnel, but electronic monitoring 24 hours a day. Rarely is the—the sister facility accessed outside of normal operating hours, so it's uncommon to, you know, have 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock traffic, you know, on any typical day of the week. And again, they stated that the security systems are monitored by outside agencies and that security personnel is on-site 24 hours a day. With respect to lighting, the city requirements have specific standards that would require this development to meet. Light spill at the property lines, zero-foot candles at the property lines are just a couple of terms that we use, but those are requirements that the applicant would be—would need to demonstrate they can meet, not only through the rezoning process, but through photometric plans that are associated with the site plan application as well. So we will, you know, discuss lighting, not only at the rezoning portion of this, but we will—we will capture it again and take another look at it with the site plan application that will be forthcoming as well. Residents did express displeasure with orders that at times come from the Epcor Water Treatment Plant. There were additional concerns adding a RV pump station as part of this facility as well. The applicant stated that the pump station portion of this development would be central to the site and not, you know, immediately adjacent to one perimeter or the other, and that they also stated that, you know, based on their sister facility that they have in Peoria as well, that they've had no resident complaints received with that facility. Improper dumping was an issue as well, and they stated and indicated that, you know, all customers are required to sign a rules and regulation sheet with respect to being able to park a motorhome or boat at this—or an RV at this facility. It strictly prohibits loud music, dumping of trash, sleeping in other—or sleeping in RVs, conducting business out of your site, and other nuisances that sometimes are associated with, you know, mini storages and other uses typical—are similar to this. From a land use perspective, we're working very class—or very close, and again, with the—I would refer back to the companion rezoning application. We believe that the RV and boat storage, you know, does align with the—with the general plan. We're moving forward in advance of the rezoning case because of the blackout period, which Mr. Hockes had previously stated. We believe that there are appropriate mitigation measures that we can address through the rezoning and site plan process that make it a good neighbor from a use standpoint. Should the application for the rezoning process not move forward in a timely manner, then the city would take the initiative to re-initiate a general plan amendment and revert the land back to what it previously was before. Through the rezoning application, again, I would just mention that it's a single-user PAD that is specific to a boat and RV storage, so they—they work hand-in-hand together, and without getting both, we would take the measures necessary to make sure that nothing other than the boat and RV storage facility would be developed in this location. The amendment is in conformance with the goals and objectives, policies of the general plan. I think we demonstrated that clearly. It will not adversely impact the surrounding community by requiring larger and more expensive infrastructure or improvements. It won't have adversely impacts on existing uses because of increased traffic, and it will not affect the livability of the area or the health and safety of the residents in the area. Therefore, staff's recommendation before you this evening is approval of the general plan amendment before you this evening, more specifically, GPA 1905, and we ask that you recommend a favorable recommendation to City Council. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well, sir. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your report, Mr. Williams. Commissioners, I'm going to go around and ask if any of you have any questions or comments related to this item—for staff, specifically. Commissioner Otlowski.
Not a question as much as a comment. It just seems that this is a good fit for that land use and the location of that. I think that, as presented, it would make sense moving forward with this minor general plan amendment.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patterson, do you have any questions or comments regarding this—this item?
No, I just think it's a very good use for a very awkward parfall.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson, any questions or comments on this item to staff?
No questions or comments, Chair.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Commissioner Grace, any question or comments for staff on this item?
No questions.
No questions or additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fighter?
No, no comment or question.
All right. Chair has no questions either. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. We have the applicant present, it looks like, tonight. Do you wish to speak?
I do.
Perfect.
For no other reason, it's nice to get out of the house and speak to someone.
That's the truth.
And the rest of the commissioners, I appreciate this. I appreciate the accommodations that have been made by staff. I'd also like to compliment staff. This has been a very long-term application, and we've met with staff several times over the months of this application. Mr. Williams made an excellent presentation. I'll try not to reiterate everything he said. We'll just make some of the comments we have specific to our application.
Mind if I interrupt you real quick? Could you get you to state your name and address for the record before you go into your comments?
My apologies, Mr. Chair. I'm clearly out of practice. It's been a month. Jason Morris with Withy Morris on behalf of the applicant.
And your address?
I, I would like to, we do have a presentation that I'm going to go through if I can.
Your address for the record as well, if I could get that.
Thank you. It's 2525 East Arizona Billmore.
Apologize if I missed that. Okay. Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this gives you an overview of the site context, and I'm going to skip some of the slides. But I would like to point out, again, something that staff mentioned, and I think is integral to the relationship between what this use is proposed for, more importantly, why we're enjoying staff's support for this application. Essentially, we are sandwiched between two water treatment plants and a mine, a mining operation with further mining operations further to the west. And at the heart of this application is a site that's 22 acres as a gross parcel, or a little over 21 gross acres. But in terms of usable net area, it's about a 15-acre parcel, which means a 15-acre parcel, given this designation, really is challenged to develop as a single-family. More likely, you would see it as a multifamily application if it were anything. But in terms of what the ideal use is, to the extent that anything could be considered an ideal use, the idea of a storage context on this piece, acting as a buffer between the more intensive industrial to our west and to our north and to our south, and the existing Ventana Lakes to our east, provides that ideal urban planning context. In addition, something that is a positive coincidence is that there is actually a buffer between this use, the old 111th Avenue right-of-way, which is not utilized as right-of-way, but does provide 50 feet before you get to Ventana Lakes to the east, which also, on the exterior of Ventana Lakes, there's a 30-foot easement on the backside, meaning that from our property line, we enjoy an 80-foot buffer before you even get to any of the buildings that are proposed or any of the structures that are proposed. So essentially, we have a buffer built in before we get to this use. But I would also propose that in and of itself, this is a buffer use with very low traffic, very low activity, and less activity than any of the existing uses. You could move forward. This gives you a closer look at that site as well as the surrounding neighborhood and some of the more intense industrial uses. Thank you. One of the abilities of this type of use is we're actually getting reuse of the existing structure. Their existing structure that serves the nursery now is a somewhat unique building. We're going to be improving that building, and that will not only act as an administrative office, but will also serve as an onsite residence for the couple that will be the full-time managers of this facility. And I mention that, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, because it's important to the residents to the east that there are eyes on this property. There is concern that if you're going to develop this type of thing, they wanted 24-hour security, 24-hour eyes onsite, and we have that by virtue of the onsite residents. Go ahead. One of the comments that we heard early on was to make sure that there were no view impingements. There were folks in Ventana Lakes to the east who mentioned during our neighborhood meeting that there were concerns that there may be some sort of view impingement as this is built. I'd like to point out, nothing on this site is going to be above a single story. And more importantly, as you can see from these exhibits, that the views are extraordinarily limited in this area. Thank you. The general plan request was covered so thoroughly by, by Mr. Williams, and it was obviously gone through at great length in your staff report. But I would like to point out, in this instance, we are asking for the employment/business-commerce designation. But more importantly, staff is matching that designation for this use, meaning that if this use does not become a reality in terms of an application, which we have already filed, the general plan designation would, the staff would look to change that designation back to the residential to make sure there are no other uses within that category that could possibly take advantage of that general plan context. Go ahead. Again, I'll go through these quickly. In terms of the land use, this employment designation does fit, and it does allow, because it is the only designation that we can use that is a low-intensity designation for this property. Go ahead. The criteria itself all favors it in terms of not expanding infrastructure that's unnecessary, that's acting as that low-intensity buffer between the higher-intensity industrial and the existing residents. And we can go forward on that. You know, I didn't anticipate Mr. Williams making such a good presentation. He's taken a lot of my thunder. But in this instance, there's also the livability and the health and safety of the residents. I would say, Mr. Chair, having done these facilities before, and in this instance, also having the benefit of an existing sister Peoria property, that this is low intensity, low noise, low light, really low activity. And short of living next to a cemetery, it's hard to find a commercial use with such limited activity. You can go through the next three slides. We've already discussed, thank you, we've already discussed the overlay itself. As you can see, what was intended by this application was to have the open spaces, which are less frequently used, on the east side, closest to the residents on the other side of that 111th Avenue alignment. In the middle would be the covered spaces, and the garage structures would be on the western side of our property, closer to the industrial uses. Thank you. The building itself, that is, that's the existing building as an improved existing building, and then you can see any of the other structures are single-story onsite. Just by way of information, this is the existing Arrowhead RV and Storage Facility in Peoria. To give you an idea of that, this, just again, by way of information, this was taken in the middle of the workday, so that gives you a sense of the amount of activity. And I'm sure you know what storage and either boat storage or self-storage facilities are like in terms of their activity. So this is typical of that. But it's also important to note, in this instance, we are directly adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, and there have been zero complaints from that single-family neighborhood. Thank you. That's illustrating my point of our proximity to the existing single-family, immediately to the east of our property, and again, the lack of interaction or complaints based upon that. And you can see, it's a very similar design in that the open spaces are closest to the residents with a, and in fact, in this instance, we share a property line, whereas in the proposed property, we will have that 80-foot alignment of 111th Avenue in between us and the back wall of the residence. And we have the covered spaces in the middle and the garage spaces on the western side, on the far western side. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I would hope that the Planning Commission would follow staff's recommendation. I'd be happy to address any other questions and look forward to coming back in the very near future with our application for rezoning to the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind hanging at the podium, I want to ask the commission, my fellow commissioners, if they have any questions of you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant? I'm going to start with Commissioner Aluski. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
No questions. Great presentation. Seems like a really good fit for the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace?
No questions. I believe it's a good fit for the area also.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
No questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Fighter?
No, just a quick comment. My in-laws actually live in a home that backs up to the sister property, and it's such a benign use. It's quiet, and there's, they've never had any issues with, with that use being literally adjacent to their backyard, and they don't have nearly the buffer that this facility will have. So I have no, no concerns.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. May I ask, are you in agreement with the stipulations and conditions?
We do, Mr. Chair. And we look forward to addressing some of the specifics at the actual zoning case.
We did have a couple of emails come up on this. Do we have any additional besides what I have in my hand? Okay. One is, would you mind if you could stay up here a little longer just to address some of the concerns that were raised by a couple of residents here? First one is James and Teresa Lovell. They write, I'm going to read their email. "Thank you for the opportunity for affected Peoria residents to have input on this project. We're concerned with the zoning change from residential to light industrial. Many of us purchased our homes with this understanding and are concerned that your actions negatively affect our home resale values. If zoning can be changed with little regard to existing property owners' concerns, then no one is protected in Peoria. If this facility does not prove to be financially feasible with the zoning, will the zoning be changed again too?" Number two, "Hours of operation for this proposed project are 24/7. We know there are similar RV storage facilities that close from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. This would allow some protection from the noise level of hitching up boats or fifth-wheel trailers in the overnight hours, since this is directly next to our residential area." Point three, "The increase of traffic on Beersley, which divides our community, presents a concern for our safe access onto this road. Her question is, would the recently constructed truck route present a safer access for these vehicles? Beersley already appears to be negatively affected with current traffic since it is frequently under repair." Fourth comment, "We are concerned with the amount of light at night that would reflect onto our backyards and negatively affect the use of our property." And number five, she writes, they write, "Height restrictions, line of sight, and odor from the dump station also are concerned." Would you like to address any of those concerns? I can repeat them back.
Mr. Chair, I can, if I may briefly, because I was also provided a copy of those comments.
Oh, terrific.
And I, I would hope that some of the comments that Mr. Williams made and some of my presentation addressed that. But in short, in terms of property value, that site is a buffer site, and the hope would be, I think an argument could be made, that providing a buffer to some of those more intense uses is actually positive, especially given the low traffic, which was another one of those points. In terms of professional commercial uses, this ranks amongst the lowest categories of traffic on the commercial, what they call the, the traffic engineers look at their, their charts and provide feedback in terms of traffic intensity. This is at the very low end of that traffic intensity. So that should not be a concern. Although I would expect during our zoning case that we'll be talking about access to the property, the hours of operation, and the driveways in particular, and the rules of regu, and regulations that govern what can occur on this site at what time. And that also includes the lighting, which is not really a general plan issue so much as it is something that is both ordinance-based and, from an operator's perspective, something that we're very concerned with to make sure that the site is well-lit, but that all of that lighting ends at the property line, at a zero-foot candle, which is already the city's requirement. I believe I've addressed...
Yeah, that last one, I think, was height restrictions, line of sight, and I think you talked about that with the single-story buildings.
Right. And given that we're talking about a general plan or amendment, Mr. Chair, in terms of height, I would anticipate even under the existing general plan designation, which is residential, it would not be uncommon to see both one- and two-story buildings without any change. So given that we're keeping one-story as a restriction, hopefully that, that alleviates that concern.
Okay. Thank you. We had one more email come in. I'm going to read that for the record. It's from Phil and Kathy Seaborn. "In response to the proposed general plan amendment, GPA 19-05, we are very much against this proposal. We live in Ventana Lakes and close to the area where this land is. Our view would be diminished by any industrial, manufacturing, storage, office, et cetera. We visited the neighborhood adjoining Arrowhead RV and Boat Storage located in Peoria and could clearly see the insightly view over the tall block wall at the rear of the residences. We are quite unhappy with the possibility of having that type of business rising over the back wall. Again, it is insightly unacceptable and will undoubtedly affect our property values negatively. Please do not allow this change to the land use designation. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In that instance, I think we really are talking about the zoning case in and of itself. But I will say, unlike the other facility, which you've now seen pictures of, this facility, the line of sight into this facility from the structure, any home in Ventana Lakes, is more than 100 feet away. So a line of sight, and we'll provide you with that during the zoning case, a line of sight actually doesn't provide a view into this, this particular development at all.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Since we have no further public comments we've received on this item, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask if there are any further questions or comments from Commissioners on the proposed minor general plan amendment, case GPA 19-05, before I request a motion. Again, I'm going to go around to each of you Commissioners. I'm going to start with Commissioner Aluski.
Yeah, I think I, you know, I understand, you know, the emails that came in and what they were stating. But I, I agree that the separation between the two and the limited use ultimately, I think, makes this piece of land a good opportunity to put this storage on there. So that would be my only comment.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patterson, do you have any questions or comments on this before we request a motion?
No further comments or questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hutchinson?
No questions or comments, Chair.
All right. Commissioner Grace?
No comments, no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fighter?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. And Chair has no further questions. I'd like to request a motion now. May I have a motion from the commission?
Yeah, this is Jay Aluski, and I would make a motion that we move forward to City Council, GPA 19-05, for approval, subject to the conditions of staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Clay Alsop, my second.
I'm sorry. Who was that that seconded?
Clay Alsop.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Alsop. All right. We have a motion and a second. To recommend approval of case GPA 19-05 to City Council. I'll take another roll call vote. And we'll start with Commissioner Aluski.
Yay.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson? All right. Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsop?
Yes.
Commissioner Fighter?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. That's unanimous approval to recommend approval of this case to City Council. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll be discussing item 5R, Peoria Commons Minor General Plan Amendment, GPA 20-01. We'll be considering amending the existing general plan land use designation on approximately 10.71 acres from commercial to urban residential. That's 12 plus dwelling units per acre. The property is located south of the southwest corner of 91st Avenue and Olive Avenue. Staff, would you please present your report?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Laura Dever, I'll be presenting the staff report for this evening. In terms of introductions, hopefully I will be kind to the applicant with his name this evening. So before you, you have... So before you, you have David Shesaschke. He is representing the Meyer Development Company. The property in question is located at the south, south of the southwest corner of 91st Avenue and Olive Avenue. Approximately 10.7 acres, as you mentioned. The request before you this evening is a general plan, minor amendment. They would like to change the land use map from a commercial designation to an urban residential designation. That's 12 DU per acre and above. The reason for that request is they would like to do a companion rezoning case for a 264-unit multifamily complex. So this general plan designation change would allow for that rezoning case to move forward for a multifamily complex to be located at this particular site. In terms of site area and context, currently this is a vacant commercial parcel, and it has been vacant for some time. And I'll get into that for, in a minute. But looking at it from a contextual standpoint, starting with the north, you have automotive uses, some commercial uses. If you go to the northeast, you have the Fry's Food Drug, Food and Drug Store over there as well. Heading to the south, directly across, would be the Crosspoint Community by Madamie Holmes. To the south is the Steeplechase Apartments. And more importantly, over to the west, you will see is the Loop 101. The interchanges at this particular location would be Northern Avenue and Olive Avenue, and that does play into consideration when we look at this request. From a general plan land use standpoint, we ask two questions, if you will. First one is, what is the likely success of the existing designation that we have? The second request that we look at is, does the proposed request make sense? And if so, does it outweigh what the existing use is? So the existing category, as I mentioned, is commercial. The proposed category they would like to go to is urban residential. The characteristics in the plan, in the general plan outline what we would expect if this was to develop as multifamily. Typically, urban residential, these land use categories are located with high level of access. They're located near services, if you will. They're located near employment centers. They have a diverse range that they can support for housing options. They could be anywhere from apartments, condominiums, townhomes. And they typically are located in areas where they buffer from medium residential density locations. And they kind of act as that transition from non-residential areas as well. So they're kind of in between. So you have single-family, multi-medium. This would be a little bit higher than that, and then you would get into your non-residential or your commercial areas. So it kind of acts as that transition towards the higher end of the residential piece. Because it is a higher-density product, or a land use, if you will, you would normally see substantial common area open space and recreational amenities provided within the community itself. This is unlike single-family, where you would have like pools and pocket parks and everything else. So you're really looking at a more centralized open space and recreational amenity package for the residents on the property. So as I mentioned, in terms of looking at this from a review standpoint, we look at it, the request for compatibility and consistency with the surrounding character. We also look at it, the property, from its historical context, and in particular, that is a significant feature on this particular application because of the underlying constraints that are associated with it. We also look at the long-term viability, if that use is retained. We also try to quantify the level of success that the development would have if it was to change to that land use category. Now typically, when we kind of do the balance sheet, the pros and the cons, what we will find is staff's recommendations will predominantly go one direction or the other. Either suggest that we retain it, or suggest that we move forward with the request. And I'll spend some time on this in particular, but when we did our analysis, we did not have substantial direction to go, to substantial recommendation to go one way or the other. We had favorable in some areas, and I'll get through as to, as to why. But in particular, what we were finding was the constraints of the freeway design in and of itself, and the shape and the location of the parcel, really do dictate what this particular site wants to be going forward. So let's go into some historical context, because this really does play into the analysis for staff. So before the Loop 101, if, for those commissioners that have been here a while, so even before Loop 101, approximately in 1983, Ironwood Homes owned properly, property about 80 acres, including this particular site. They were working with all of the agencies with regard to where that alignment of that freeway was going to land. In '84, the City Council approved what we known as a precursor of a planned area development, which was a PAD. We called them planned unit developments at the time. So just think, it's like a PAD, if you will. But anyway, City Council decided to approve a PUD change to assist developing the property in relation to the freeway alignment. 1985, further engineering analysis occurred, and it shifted that freeway alignment further to the east, and it impacted this C2-zoned property. So in reality, the shape of the parcel that you're looking at is a remnant piece. It's a regular in nature, shallow depth, and it was the result of final engineering design based on where the Loop 101 ended up. So 1985, Ironwood Homes came back to the city and shifted that C2 boundary over to match the alignment. Okay? So from 1985, it stayed vacant into 2005, when the parcel was rezoned from C2 to a commercial PAD. When they did that, they specifically acknowledged and modified the standards to address the physical constraints of the site, that irregular shape, shallow depth. It still remained vacant. And since 2005, there were two additional PAD modifications approved to the land uses and the standards to try to still increase the developability of this, of this site for commercial uses. So there's been several modifications to try to increase the developability of this site as a commercial use since it's been vacant since the 1980s. And the reason being is why it's a remnant parcel is because of the freeway alignment. So before you this evening, the applicant is proposing, as I mentioned, a multifamily development, as you can see. And I'll show you, this is the site plan. I'll show you conceptual building elevations momentarily. But what you have are two- and three-story buildings. The two-story buildings essentially go around the perimeter of the site. The three-story buildings would be central in the center of the site, if you will. Access would be from 91st Avenue. And there would be a number of amenities for each of the buildings for the residents to use. What you have on the screen in front of you is a conceptual elevation of approximately what one of those middle buildings would look like. That's what is proposed at this point in time. So in looking at staff's recommendation, we did a thorough analysis, and we actually started with the economic viability of the site. First, we looked at, should we try to retain this as a commercial use? So typically, from an economic development standpoint, when you have commercial designation adjacent to a freeway, it's considered advantageous, actually. However, in 2005, the City Council specifically acknowledged that this particular parcel was not a prime market location. That was mentioned within the City Council communication and acknowledged during that hearing. And, if you will, they specifically asked for a limitation on use. So staff, prior to it going to City Council in '05, said, "We cannot get high-intensity commercial uses on this particular site." And so that's where that restriction, so instead of that full range of what you could do for commercial, they restricted it down in order to get this to remain as commercial. And for, and because of that reduction in the number of uses, what they did was they granted modified development standards, an exception or a waiver, if you will, to try to improve the developability of the site. So what are, from an economic standpoint, is if we were to retain commercial, the site hasn't developed as-is, and we've already modified the standards a couple of times. You probably would need to modify the standards yet again in order for this site to develop as commercial. One thing to keep in mind, if you were to do that, it would still attract a business that's probably considered less than prime market status. It probably would not be a business that would be on one of our most sought-after items within the community. So we look at this, then, this particular site in character with other sites, other vacant sites that we have along Loop 101. Other sites that are commercial, adjacent to the 101, are actually better positioned to attract the uses that we want than this particular site. And so we would, we're always very careful when we're making a recommendation like this, that we want to support healthy centers, and we want to preserve strategic and well-positioned sites. We don't think that this is the most advantageous site for commercial. So then we kind of flip the other direction in the analysis. Okay, so if it's not commercial, does urban residential make sense at this particular location? So from an economic analysis standpoint, this would bring additional residents into the area. When you have more residents, that supports the local businesses that are in the area. More rooftops, you need a certain number of rooftops to support local businesses, and it is adjacent to goods and services. When you start increasing that demand, that can be seen as a positive influencer for business retention and attraction. If you have enough of that, you can actually influence the mix of the businesses within that particular area. So while these are positive aspects, we're not, this site would not have a significant increase in residents when you're looking at it on a large scale. So it would have some positive aspects, but not to a great extent in terms of increasing demands for goods and services. So it's a positive, but not a large positive in that regard. One other thing that we also look at is, does it further advance the city's workforce goals? And given the conceptual nature of the project, we're not, we're not able to answer that. But what we are able to answer instead is, does it provide a variety of housing options to meet a diverse workforce, their needs for different lifestyles? Yes, yes, it does. And in that aspect, it meets the city's economic prosperity goals. So in particular, the economic analysis standpoint, there's some positives and negatives on both sides of the coin. But at the end of the day, this particular site, if it was to go urban residential, would support the general plan's economic prosperity goals, and it would increase housing within the particular area where it would be needed. So moving forward then to a circulation standpoint, when you look at a commercial PAD, which has underlying kind of C2 standards, if you will, those actually result in large-scale developments. And those typically have a range of residential uses that are very intense. They range from less intense to very intense. They can include retail, specialty stores, hospitality, and entertainment uses. And I'm going to try not to speak too much for a traffic engineer down the way, but let me see if I can put my hat on here. So a commercial use would have different peak generation times, slightly compared to a residential setting, if you will. But it's actually what type of commercial use that you have, the specific use that determines the, the level of turnover or the number of trips in and out of the site. So not all commercial uses are the same, and there is a large variety. This particular one had a reduced level of intensity, and so we would have to gauge that compared to on the residential use side. Looking at it from what we, from the information that we have right now, we have to have an analysis, one way or the other, whether it was to develop as a commercial center, or whether it was to develop as a residential center. But from what the information that we have, what we're seeing is, right now, 91st Avenue with the way that it's set up, we generally believe it's constrained enough, and it would limit the ability to serve a commercials, a commercial center envisioned by the general plan. On the reverse side, looking at it from the residential standpoint, we see there's enough information to say accessible, acceptable levels of service can be achieved if this was to develop as multifamily. So there would be some circulation concerns if, that we would need to address if it was to develop as commercial. We believe we can make this work from the circulation side if it was to be multifamily. From a transit and pedestrian connectivity standpoint, there are already pedestrian connections within the area. The city is currently looking at expansion of transit throughout the community. 91st Avenue is an area of consideration, so we believe while transit is not currently available, it will be, it will likely be available at some point in time in the future. From an educational facility standpoint, this is located within PUSD. We have communicated the request to the school district. We would ask that, should this project move forward, they would work with and communicate it through PUSD to confirm the level of impact and ability to accommodate the projected number of students. What I would also say is, if this project was to be located in a northern portion of the community where it was going from commercial to residential, the education analysis would have a considerably different tone and tenor. There is not the same capacity issues within the southern portion of the city in this particular location. And so PUSD has indicated there is always a need and assistance, and they would always like to enjoy a cooperative relationship with the, with the applicant and work to, towards a voluntary donation agreement. They do not have the same capacity issues here as they do elsewhere. So in terms of moving on to growth areas, as Mr. Williams said, this is a Tier 1. And what we did when we said, "What is a Tier 1?", this is immediately adjacent to infrastructure and services. This is basically right there. It's an infill site, if you will. So we would expect this particular site to develop in the short and the midterm horizon. In terms of conformance to goals and policies, this particular application, it balances land uses. It provides for an array of housing options. It is an infill piece, as I mentioned, and it's a redevelopment opportunity. It kind of creates that residential work and retail land use in proximity to each other. It increases the housing stock options, and it provides a diversity of housing types and prices. For high quality, it will be built in a sustainable manner, and it's going to be meeting a need for a variety of housing for residents of all stages of life. In terms of public outreach, this was, this case was properly noticed, using our traditional methods. There was a neighborhood meeting held February 24th at the Residence Inn. No members of the public attended, and we have not received any correspondence with regard to the proposal. In terms of key findings and recommendations, this site is not considered a prime or a strategic site for commercial uses in nature, given its physical constraints. We believe that retaining that commercial designation may yield some employment, but that minimal job growth would have a marginal impact to the area. Instead, having this as multifamily would increase the housing options to meet a diverse workforce. It's considered... It's considered infill, so it's able to be served by existing city infrastructure and municipal services. As I did mention, it would be in conformance with the goals, objectives and policies of the general plan, and we do not see this as adversely impacting the surrounding community as a whole or a portion thereof. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, with that, staff is making a recommendation of approval of Case GPA 20-01 to the City Council. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dever, for that report. I'm going to ask commissioners if they have any questions, staff on this item. I'm going to go around the virtual table again. Commissioner Luski, any questions or comments from Ms. Dever or staff?
No questions of staff.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Patterson, any questions?
I was just concerned a little bit about the noise impact to the freeway on residential at this location. Does staff have any concerns about that? I assume there's a noise wall on the freeway that would help, but just wanted to follow up with a question on the noise impacts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, in terms of noise impact, that would be one of the items that we would address through the rezoning and the site plan application. We do take appropriate design measures to try to mitigate noise as much as possible through sound wall, orientation of the buildings, could be placement of landscaping. So we have a number of design methods at our disposal, and we are cognizant of placing multifamily adjacent to the freeway. That is one of the considerations and things that we would be looking to mitigate as we, as the project moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Commissioner Hutchinson, any questions or comments for staff?
No questions, just a comment that I think you guys really knocked it out of the park with this one. It's a great infill project, it's needed in this area. I think it's a great, great fit, and, you know, I was looking at some of the renderings and imagining it in that area. And I really appreciate the history on the parcel. It is kind of in a weird place to house, to house commercial. And it was great, great news to hear about the school and the accommodations being able to be made. So I think this is just a win-win for everybody.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Grace, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
No questions, very good, Commissioner Hutchinson, I think it's great, thank you.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Fighter?
I hate to be the odd man out here. I've genuinely been struggling with this project, to be quite candid. The way our city is configured, our commercial freeway frontage is really limited. I just, I know there's some history, I know we've been working through this for a while. It just feels short-sighted to me. And we have, we've just recently approved three other multifamily projects less than a mile away down the street. I just, I'm just reluctant to give up commercial land on the freeway when, the way the city is configured, it's really at a premium for us. That's just my comments on it.
Great, thank you for that, Commissioner Fighter. Couple of quick questions, and maybe it happens at the rezoning phase, Ms. Dever, but has fire or police reviewed this? Do they get involved at this stage, or do we wait until the rezone phase to take a look at this to see if they have any concerns? I'm guessing 264, was it, units?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
I'm guessing a couple of people per unit, two and a half, I don't know what the, how many people will be living in each of these units, but you could be talking, you know, five, 600-plus residents. So would we ask fire and police to review for access issues, crime potential issues, if we were to place something like this there?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, when we do a review for the, even for the general plan case and rezoning and site plan, we have multiple departments reviewing the application. We look at it from another, number of aspects, each of our specialties, if you will. Fire in particular for circulation, life safety concerns, refus from our public works folks. Our site development and our traffic staff are looking at access and retention and everything else. When we go and make a recommendation, we take a look at all of those aspects. And so in looking at the application itself, we are favorable for the request. As we continue to move forward to get more details of the project, when we get into those operational characteristics, we start getting into further analysis and we continue to have that dialogue. So this is kind of like one layer of the analysis, and we'll continue to have that dialogue with multiple departments as we go forward.
Okay, somewhere to come on that. All right, thank you. And then just a comment, you've heard me say it before, I really don't like giving up commercial space. It's prime, it generates taxes, it's revenue-producing, and returning it to residential use. I absolutely share Commissioner Fighter's concerns there. That said, it sounds like it's not, for lack of trying to market this piece of land, from what I've been able to gather, it sounds like there's been a lot of different attempts. Council's taken a look at this on a couple of different occasions at least, if not more than that. And that if it was developable, marketable, we should have seen something by now. So I'm going to read into that, that we tried that, it didn't work, and maybe it's time to take another tact here. So, but it's a great observation, and normally I would totally be on board with that belief that we shouldn't convert this. But based on the history you provided, and I appreciate you giving some context to that, that was helpful to me. Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing now, and it looks like the applicant is present. Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes.
If you could state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, David Sheshevsky. My address is 11811 North Tatum, Suite 1051, Phoenix, Arizona. Here on behalf of Meyer Development as the developer and the Sedona 43 as the property owner. Again, I appreciate staff's efforts and a wonderful job on the staff report, because this is a unique piece of property. And, you know, in addition to that, I would tell you by definition, if not the dictionary definition of infill, this property most certainly is, is an infill parcel. My client has owned the property for seven or eight years now. As staff's pointed out, has been zoned commercial now for almost 40 years. And to my knowledge, at least in the term we've owned it, we've had virtually no commercial interest in it whatsoever. And certainly over the time going through original zoning back in the 80s, the PAD that was done in the early 2000s and subsequent changes to that, this site has just never materialized as a viable commercial option. And I think, you know, it's not our assumption, I think that's market demand. That is what market is telling us, that this property is just not right for commercial. And, you know, I think council recognized it, as staff pointed out, making the note that this is just not a prime market location. Where do we have a clicker? Oh, perfect, okay. If we can go down a couple of slides. Staff has done a great job in presenting, you know, the area, the context, relationship of the property. And so I'll just take a few minutes to try to, you know, give you a little bit more detail on the conceptual project itself, and then again, as to some of the supportive comments for the general plan, so we can go to the next slide. On your screen before you, you may or may not be aware, what is shown here is the plan that was approved in 2005. And it was really for kind of an office, some retail, and then a large RV storage facility. Again, this was 2005, pre-recession, pre-craziness in the market, you know, probably the, one of the strongest, most active growth markets the Phoenix metro has ever seen, and this project still didn't go forward. Again, I think it just drives home the point of, while we may all want it to be commercial, and maybe proximity to interstate, you know, looks like it should be commercial, I just think, and I think the market has dictated that the size and shape of the property, the orientation of the property, the access challenges, and the location being off-corner, not really within a commercial corridor, just isn't going to work from a commercial development standpoint. If we can go to the next slide. Let's go one more down. There we go. Real quick, staff showed you a brief concept, this is a little bit more detailed drawing of the development. As we pointed out, the four L-shaped buildings in the center of the project would be the three-story buildings. Again, they're centered around two separate pool courtyard areas that feature both outdoor amenities, barbecues, the pools themselves. If we go to the next slide, please. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see kind of a green space on the north side of the L-shaped building, that's a dog park. You'll see other green spaces throughout the development. One of the unique features that staff pointed out in terms of urban residential characteristics is an increased amount of open space and common areas. This particular project, we're at about 18.5% public open space as part of the overall project, significantly higher than what you would normally see in an urban residential setting and what is required by code. Couple of other things to point out here, the access points, and you'll notice two on 91st Avenue, the southern, or the one to the left-hand side, is the main access point that would come in, it would be a full-access drive. And that has taken some work with our traffic engineers, with city staff redesigning that median, just to try to make that work, because it's not only challenging relative to the shape and orientation of the property, but you have some very high-voltage power lines running on that side of 91st Avenue. Unfortunately, where we would choose and where staff would choose to have a full-access point, there's a significant power pole right in that position. And so that caused some shifting around, and it was really almost a jigsaw puzzle, if you will, to try to get these access points to work. Both access points are gated, so this will be a gated community, and that goes a little bit to the chair's comment in terms of police weighing in, in terms of crime and activity, and the type of tenant and the type of environment we're trying to create here for, for the tenants. You'll also notice pretty heavily landscaped frontage along 91st Avenue. This is a second or third-generation site plan, and one of the things that has significantly changed here is, you'll see the five white buildings along 91st Avenue, those are carriage unit buildings, so they're two-story buildings, internally parked, so there's garages that you'll access from the internal side of the project. So really, from a streetscape perspective, we tried to give a very beautiful streetscape, heavily landscaped, you'll have the carriage units up on the street, so it gives sort of this real urban residential feel as to more of a, you know, a traditional, push everything back to the middle, and kind of a large sea of parking fronting on the street. Again, you'll notice a few carriage units along the freeway, and then again, the main context, the main living areas internalized to the project. In terms of the rezoning request that'll be coming before you, we're finalizing some of those documents, the PAD documents and the standards and narratives that will be coming forward, and we're hope to be able to submit that PAD rezoning request here in the very near future. Go to the next one. Again, as staff pointed out, perspective of the building, and so this again is one of the proposed elevations for the larger, middle, L-shaped buildings that we showed. Go to the next one, too. These are the perspectives of the carriage units buildings, so the elevation in the top right-hand corner would be the front of the unit, so that would be the elevation essentially fronting onto 91st Avenue. The lower right elevation is the internal elevation, and you'll see the garage areas that are internal to those buildings. And again, those buildings, both in terms of design, elevation, give a very nice perspective with the landscaping, a two-story building, and then a step-up perspective on the three-story buildings that are internalized to the site. Next one. Again, in terms of the, you know, the general plan request for you, as staff noted and as I noted early on, this property has been and will continue to be significantly challenged as a commercial tract. Again, we think we've given it ample opportunity over almost 40 years to be developed commercial, and you would think with now freeway frontage and other commercial activities to the north, you know, maybe it would develop. But again, it is, for reasons that, again, we believe, our location, orientation, and basically spatial relations, it's just not a commercial site. Even going through, as I mentioned, the early 2000s, when everything in the Phoenix metro area was being developed. Again, we think the plan we're bringing before you really is a very viable, very sustainable solution to a piece of property that has sat vacant really forever. The project, again, we think blends well with the urban residential land use to the south. We think it acts as a very good buffer to the existing single-family residential to the east, in terms of buffering both the interstate. And, you know, in contrast, if this would develop as a commercial project, even what was approved back in 2005, in terms of vehicular access and activity and other things, we certainly think this project as a residential land use is much more compatible with those single-family homes to the immediate east. Again, in terms of the proposed urban residential context, again, we think this brings a very highly compatible and sustainable project to the area. You know, it buffers, as I mentioned, the 101 over there, and certainly in terms of diversity, and all general plans that we, that I've dealt with really focus on this, and even, even so more now, in terms of diversity of housing options. You know, we, we've all dealt through, you know, the millennials are out there and all these different generational characteristics, and providing this type of product, a very nice multifamily product, and this will be a combination of both studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and the carriage units. It's a pretty diverse product mix, which will attract a very diverse tenant base. Again, it supports, as staff pointed out, the city's employment, generational characteristics here, and again, adding, you know, supportive housing to future employment uses in the area. Go to the next one. As staff pointed out, again, you know, we, the characteristics under the general plan, this supports many of them, including the balanced land use, housing options, encouraging infill development. And as I mentioned, and if you look at an aerial, again, this is by definition an infill project that, while everything else around it has developed over the years, it still remains undeveloped. And again, finally, lastly, the healthy neighborhood concept here, again, of bringing in a very sustainable, very attractive residential project certainly increases the viability of the neighborhood, and the additional density will be a long-term supportive condition to the residential, or the retail to the north. Go to the next one. Again, I think I kind of summarized, and staff did a fantastic job for me in pointing out their key findings. Again, that this is not a prime or a strategic commercial location. And again, it would emphasize that market over 40 years, I think, has set up a huge red flag that this is simply not a viable commercial project. The supportive uses here for the employment growth in this area will be advantageous. Having a variety of housing options available to meet the lifestyle change, lifestyle conditions both now and in the future will be afforded by this new project. Again, considering it's an infill site, this really is compatible with all the existing infrastructure, both roads, parks, streets, and as staff mentioned, with schools. I've had discussions with the school district on this, they seem very supportive of this, and we're continuing our discussions relative to a development agreement with the school district because of this project. Again, the amendment does support the goals, objectives and the policy of the city's general plan. And again, we think it is a very creative and very viable solution for a long vacant project that we think will put it back into a very good productive use. With that, we would request your support, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you for that presentation. If you wouldn't mind remaining at the podium just a bit, I want to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any question or comments of you. I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Luski. Any questions or comments of the applicant?
No, this seems very straightforward. Thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson, any questions?
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
No questions, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Grace, any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fighter?
I don't have any specific questions for the applicant, thank you very much. I just, like I said before, I struggle with giving up valuable commercial freeway frontage. This feels short-sighted to me. I know when I went through the interview process to be, to participate in the planning commission, the one thing they asked me, what I thought the biggest deficiencies for the city of Peoria, and the one comment I made was daytime employment. And here I have, you know, we have a case in front of us that we're giving up a site that has potential daytime employment, which helps drive additional, you know, retail and development to our, to our community. I just, I struggle with the change of this particular site.
No further comments or questions from the commission? Do you want to ask the applicant, are you in agreement with the stipulations and conditions outlined in the staff's... outlined in the staff report?
We are.
Okay. Thank you. And have we received any emails, questions from the public? We have not. Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and go ahead, since we've received no public comments or questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. Before I request a motion from the commission, I'm going to go around and ask one more time, are there any questions or comments from commissioners on the proposed minor general plan amendment, GPA twenty dash zero one? Commissioner Otte?
No, you know, I think I can echo, you know, my support in this, understanding that we are potentially giving up a commercial opportunity there. But I think we've heard enough, you know, enough description of this property and the fact that, you know, it's never been built, even though there's been some attempts. You tie that into the current, current time we're in, where they're already talking about commercials slowing down in Phoenix. I just think this is the better of, I don't want to say two evils, but I do support moving forward with this.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
I agree with those comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yeah, I also appreciate Commissioner Fighter's comments with the daytime employment, and I think we've had these, we've had these discussions multiple times, but the viability of this property for that kind of development has obviously shown itself, and I'm totally in support of this project. Like I said, I'm already envisioning these renderings being placed there, and it really does, it just, it just makes the area that much more viable.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Commissioner Grace?
I'm in agreement with, I guess, that the site should be moved into the general plan as a commercial piece because of its history, the location, and given our economic climate. I mean, I hate giving up commercial property because that's always been one of the big issues in Peoria is the bedroom community, but I believe that this has had the opportunity to develop as any type of commercial piece, and it just hasn't been able to pull through based on what the market's done, so I'm in agreement with moving it into the general plan as a residential.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
I'm sorry if I missed it. Are we taking a vote right now, or are we having comments right now?
Yeah, this is just if you have any further questions or comments on the general plan amendment, minor general plan amendment request before we request a motion.
Okay. Thank you. No further comments.
Okay. Commissioner Fighter, any further comments or questions?
I think I've made mine fairly clear. Thank you.
Very good. All right. With that, may I ask for a motion, please? May I have a motion?
Chair, this is Commissioner Hutchinson. I move that we recommend approval of the GPA. Oh, shit, I don't have another, oh, shoot, sorry. I moved that we move this forward to the city council with proof.
I'll remind the commissioners, this is live TV.
I'll second that. This is Jay.
Thank you. That's all right. All right. We have a, Commissioner Hutchinson has motioned for approval. Is there a second to the motion?
Jay Otte, I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, commissioners. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of case GPA twenty dash zero one to city council. We're going to take another roll call vote here. Please signify your approval or not. Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, for GPA twenty dash zero one.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace? Commissioner Alsop?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fighter?
No.
All right. Thank you. The motion passes six to one to recommend approval of case GPA twenty dash zero one to city council. Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I did not hear you vote.
Oh, did I not vote? I apologize. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for catching that. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item six R. This is Plan Peoria AZ Implementation Plan Update, Minor General Plan Amendment GPA twenty dash zero two. And this is a city-initiated minor amendment to update section eight point seven implementation program within chapter eight, implementation of the Peoria Plan AZ General Plan. Staff, please present your report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Lori Dever once again back before you with regard to our wonderful general plan that's up and running right now. So Plan Peoria AZ. If you will recall over discussions of the previous year, when we were looking to do the comprehensive rewrite, we said, what good is a plan unless we have an implementation program in it? And part of what we said that we were going to do for this particular cycle coming forward is to bring action items to you. And specifically, this has been an ongoing dialogue with multiple departments and council members and leadership. So some of these items come from livability goals. They come from our CIP updates as we've gone through the budget process and continue to go through the budget process. And it's also coming out of individual department work plans. So what you see here are action items that we are recommending to be included in the implementation program. And so I'll just kind of briefly touch on those in particular. So in the screen before you, you have the three sheets. They are color-coded to match the individual chapters associated with them. But let me just kind of point out a couple of different items. In terms of economic prosperity, we have a number of items listed there. There are four, but one in particular stands out at this point in time during kind of the circumstances that we're going through. So our economic development department has put together, and we're in the process of putting together, a business concierge program, if you will, and they, with the task of reaching out to our business partners, big, small, and everything in between, finding out what they need in terms of access to services, and for those wanting to come in, what would it take for those businesses to come into the city? This particular item got expanded in record time because of what's going on with the COVID-19 situation. They took those contacts, and we've expanded our team members that are working to reach out to businesses on the small business side, the entrepreneur side, and everybody in between. What services do you need? How can we help you? How do we get through this time together? So that is, in effect, one of our quickest ramp-up of a program you've ever seen, and it has been effective. We are talking a significant outreach to our business community to say, we are here for you. What do you need? And as the team members who are reaching out to them, they're trying to get educated as quickly as possible with available services, both federal, state, and everything in between, and providing that information out to the public. We're also helping to make the connections for businesses to help businesses as well. That's just one area in particular. So that would be the EP seven that you would see on the screen. Moving forward to smart growth, this actually hits a little bit closer to home, if you will, you know, with regard to the planning department's efforts. We have a number of zoning ordinance changes that we're looking to bring forward to align the general plan with our other documents that we use, which would be the zoning ordinance, the design review manual. So we're looking at modernizing our parking standards, our landscaping standards, to kind of bring them forward, if you will. We're also looking at adding some gateway and signature street plans to the program. So identifying, how do we create that identity and carry our identity through our streetscape, if you will, from anywhere from the mundane elements to those more iconic elements through the public art program and things of that nature. We're also looking at updating the design review manual. We want to move Peoria forward in terms of creating a place of distinction, and so in particular, we're looking at sense of place and place-making opportunities within our commercial employment in old-town settings in particular. So we are excited about those efforts. You'll see those efforts through various commission meetings in the future because we've kind of talked about that briefly. We're also working with our design review board to make those changes as well. So we don't want to forget our friends in transit and transportation there as well. They're looking, they've got a number of initiatives, but one that I did actually mention tonight was the expansion of transit within the community. That is, that is a topic of interest, and so our transit staff are looking at ways to move and increase those opportunities forward, looking at, and so you'll see more to come in that regard, but that's also one of the actionable items that will be moving forward relatively soon. If you have had the opportunity, we actually have a pilot program that you'll see green markings where the bicycle lanes are. They're on Thunderbird, and I'm kind of blanking on the other ones, Eighty-third Avenue. And so you'll see that. We were doing a test case in to see what method of application holds up the best money for the, you know, value for the money, so to speak. And so they're looking at expanding that program down the road. And so that's just one of the, one of the ways in which we can kind of have everybody share the road in a safer manner, and it creates that visual cue for drivers to say, you know, that's a diversion area, or that's a point of possible conflict respect where the bicyclists are going to go. That's their area versus in the drivelanes on that one. So I'm actually kind of excited because we're kind of taking lessons learned from other communities, and we're making it Peoria. So in terms of, let's see, one that is near and dear to Mr. Lemka's heart is the expansion of the adaptive traffic cameras. So every time we have a new signal that goes in or we're updating an intersection and we're replacing signals, they're adding more cameras in kind of that intelligent traffic system that we showcased to commission a while ago. But we keep expanding the network, if you will, and that has been a great success for the community, and we look forward to continuing that moving forward. In terms of healthy neighborhoods, definitely want to increase our ability to access healthy foods for our residents, and so we're looking at making changes to the zoning ordinance and a few other documents in order for that to occur. So stay tuned. We'll be reporting on that down the road. And we're looking to establish and expand programs to foster and to retain homeownership, and in particular, that is also something that is near and dear on everyone's mind at this point in time as well. And last but not least, on the arts and cultural enrichment, if you haven't had the opportunity, the staff has provided an RFP out, a call to consultants, if you will. They're looking at updating their arts master plan that will actually allow city staff to identify best locations for public art installations, and it actually has a much larger scope than that. But that is an exciting aspect because it's blending that aesthetic with the built environment. And so both arts folks, the arts commission, city staff, multiple departments are working together to take that and move that forward, so that should be a great endeavor. We will be bringing that back up as a project update to commission down the road as well. And last but not least, the superior public services. As always, we try to be responsible and respectful of our taxpayers' dollars that we receive. And so we're looking at our CIP budget in terms of looking at technology, and in particular, our normal course of business is changing even daily as we speak. So how do we continue to provide high-quality services in the manner that the residents expect? So we'll keep refining our procedures. We'll keep looking for opportunities, and we're going to be moving forward because the goal is not just good service, it's superior service in that regard. That's about it. So what you see on the screen with the exhibits, those are the action items that we are asking to be incorporated within the general plan. In terms of key findings, this actual amendment is in preparation for voter ratification of the general plan in fall 2020. We do believe it's a good overall improvement to the plan. The reason being is, a plan is good, actions are great, so this kind of adds that other component to it. The action items that we're recommending is not solely for the good or benefit of any particular landowner. This is for citywide action, and it is in conformance with what we're trying to do with the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan itself. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff is asking kindly for a recommendation of approval for case GPA twenty dash O two to the city council.
All right. Thank you for that terrific report, Ms. Dever. Commissioners, do we have any questions on this item? I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Otte.
No, I don't. Very good overview of it, though. Well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson, any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace?
No questions.
Commissioner Alsop?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fighter?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. You know, I'm just going to share a funny story. It triggered it when you talked about the adaptive streetlight technology. So back in the old days, when we drove our kids to school, and they weren't homeschooled as they are now, seems like it's an eternity ago, I would, my son goes to Cactus High School, and we would head down Sixty-seventh Avenue, turn down Greenway Road, and head to Sixty-third Avenue. Without doubt, every morning, we would get caught by this light. We detested this light, particularly my son, because it would make, put him right to the edge of being late for class. And you remember me telling him, when we had toured the traffic control center, I talked about the really cool thing we have in Peoria is adaptive street technology. It senses when a car's there, it stays green when it, you know, sees traffic, and it uses the smart technology, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, so he used this opportunity to say, well, where's this smart adaptive tech, I don't know what he called it, but where's this smart streetlight technology, Dad? I says, Son, we're not in Peoria. We're in Glendale. So, yeah, it's, you miss it when you don't have it, let me just tell you. As we sit there every morning, watching no cars go by, and just twiddling our thumbs for it seems like an eternity. So, so glad to have that, and wonderful to see that our plans are to expand that technology. So, anyway. All right. Very good. I'm going to, do we hold a public, we would have held a public hearing for this one as well, wouldn't we? So I'm going to go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Have we received any questions or comments from any members of the public on this item? We have not. Okay. Very good. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. Before I request a motion, are there any further questions or comments from commissioners on case GPA twenty dash zero two before I request a motion? Commissioner Otte?
No, none.
Commissioner Patterson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No questions, Chair. Thanks.
Commissioner Grace?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Alsop?
No, thank you.
And Commissioner Fighter?
No, thank you.
All right. Seeing no questions or comments, may I have a motion?
This is Jay Otte. I'll make a motion that we move six R, the Plan Peoria Plan, Peoria AZ Implementation Plan Update, the Minor General Plan Amendment, GPA twenty dash zero two. We move that forward to the city council.
Okay.
Commissioner Patterson, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of case GPA twenty dash zero two to city council. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsop?
Yes.
Commissioner Fighter?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye, and it passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Let's see, our... Our, uh, our next action item before us tonight is item 7R. Plan Peoria AZ Land Use Map Update, Minor General Plan Amendment GPA 20-03. This again is a city-initiated minor amendment to figure two, 2040 Future Land Use Map within Chapter 3, Smart Growth of the Plan Peoria AZ General Plan. I assume, Ms. Dever, you're gonna be presenting on this one as well?
No. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'm gonna give Lori a break now.
Give her a break. Well deserved. All right, Mr. Hockes.
You bet. Uh, so item 7R, this is a city-initiated amendment. Any second here. Advance the, oops, advance the slideshow here. All right, here we go. City-initiated amendment, um, as you may recall with last year's cycle, uh, we comprehensively updated the general plan. As part of that update, we, uh, included brand-new land use categories, and we had a brand-new future land use map that, of course, was adopted by council in, in November. Um, at the time, uh, we had noted to the commission that we had been in regular communication with a few, uh, stakeholders, including the State Land Department and Property Reserve. And the Property Reserve manages the, what's known as a barred ranch property along Loop 303. Um, while the new land use map is substantially reflective of those joint planning efforts, there were still some ongoing discussions in regards to some limited refinements. Uh, this amendment therefore reflects these final small adjustments that I'll talk about tonight. We have four to talk about that were not able to be included as part of the 2019 map. Okay. So let's go through the request number one, and this is slide, uh, 47. So if you look at the map here on the screen, you'll note the Loop 303 at the upper left-hand corner. Um, this, you've got the Aguafria River running through the middle of it, and in the middle, the barred ranch property. So we're talking about a site you'll see identified in the middle of the screen. It's about 37.9 acres. Uh, the request from Property Reserve was to re-designate the site from commercial to suburban residential, five to 12 units per acre. So what's the purpose of the re-designation? Well, since that point, uh, we've got some better engineering. Uh, we've also been working with our engineering department. There was a, they're, they're working with a consultant that has, uh, performed an alignment study for the Joe Maxx Road alignment. And whereas before, which is last year, Joe Maxx Road was envisioned to bisect the property. As a result of the change from the alignment study, Joe Maxx Road is substantially to the south of the property. So before, commercial might have made sense, um, with the change in alignment, um, the commercial island, if you will, would have been floating out in the middle. So the request from Property Reserve is based on that change and that, that renewed engineering, that the site is better situated for suburban residential, and staff agrees with that, with that position there. On the second request, this is a state land parcel, and, uh, again, the Loop 303 going through the middle. Uh, we identify the site in red, and this is a portion of the property that's, that's directly west of the Aguafria River corridor. The vast area to the east, uh, is all state land operator, uh, state land ownership as well. And so again, through that refined engineering that we've done with State Land Department and through discussions, um, there's an area of about 70 acres that are proposed for modification. So whereas the existing land use designation is for park and open space, which doesn't allow much beyond, you know, what the title would suggest, and some limited residential, um, the request is to re-designate it to rural residential to be consistent with what's to the west of it. Through that final engineering, uh, the parcel and a large part of the area was seen to have some developable area, so the State Land Department's requested that that modification be, uh, be done, and staff agrees with that. Request number three, um, also state land as well. Um, let me, it seems like there's a lot of things going on on the screen. I'll try to describe it to you. Again, the Loop 303 corridor, this is our future economic development corridor. Happy Valley Parkway is, um, substantially in the middle of this slide. So I'll talk about Site 1 and then Site 2. So you see Site 1 on the screen. It represents about 24.7 acres. Currently, it's designated office, local, commercial, and there are portions of it that are park, open space. Um, they're requesting that it be re-designated to mixed-use neighborhood village. Mixed-use neighborhood village is, uh, what we show on the screen to the southeast, which we consider a prime property there. Mixed-use neighborhood village allows a number of options, and state land, um, certainly desires maximum flexibility, but it's a, it's a designation that allows all kinds of commercial unemployment opportunities, potentially some residential, all integrated into a village format. So that's what, that would be on Site 1, and staff agrees with that refinement. Uh, Site number 2 is, uh, at the northeast corner of the Loop 303 and Happy Valley Road. It's currently 23 acres in size and designated for park, open space. That park, open space designation is reflective of a large wash corridor that is to the east of it. Um, the debt, the request is to re-designate it to office, local, commercial. And again, because of this additional engineering analysis that's been performed and, uh, discussions with State Land Department, we believe there's some viability for some limited, uh, office and local commercial, uh, whereas the site does have limited access, some access constraints. It does enjoy great visibility, and again, there's some, uh, viability for some limited office and local commercial. So we, the staff, do concur with that request. And then finally, the fourth request here, also state land parcel, uh, this is the Loop 303. This is at the far western end of our general plan area. The, uh, site is denoted, uh, in red. It's directly north of, I guess, that's the Cordabella Development in the county there. Um, if you draw, if you've driven along that corridor, you'll note that the site, uh, does not enjoy visibility at all. You've got a very high sound wall there. Um, it, there is access to the east at the El Mirage Interchange. However, access to this portion is very limited there. Uh, currently, the designation is suburban residential, five to 12 units per acre. The request is to re-designate it to employment, business, commerce, to be more in line with what's in the area. So with the limited access and visibility, the, the thoughts was, were that it was not a great site for residential and perhaps better suited for, uh, back-office employment or, uh, some type of, uh, business commerce use. Uh, staff is, uh, in concurrence with that, uh, request as well. And then finally, our key findings, we believe that these four refinements, uh, represent an overall improvement to the general plan, not solely for the good or benefit of a particular, uh, area, and we believe it's in conformance with the goals, objectives, and policies. And with that, uh, staff recommends approval of case GPA 2003 to the City Council.
With that, I'll take any questions. Thank you, Mr. Hockes, for your report. Uh, Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Otlowski?
Um, no, no questions. I, I just think that Exhibit 4 is kind of an odd spot for us, but, um, I understand that, you know, that is not a viable location for very much at all, but I, I would be in agreement with this.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Patterson, uh, do you have any questions or comments, staff?
No, I agree. It looks like, uh, another awkward parcel developed in number four, but, uh, I think they're all good changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, um, Chris, what is the, um, uh, access to, uh, request number two? Uh, what's, what, what is the access to that site?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, uh, so request number two, that's the, uh, Loop 303, that parcel next to the Aguafria River. That area to the north, to the Loop 303, north of Loop 303, has really very limited access. In fact, the only way to get up to there and a few of the private properties is through a, uh, a future local street that would go through the barred ranch property under the freeway to serve that area up there. So very limited access unless, um, some type of expensive, uh, bridge connection was done in the future, but that's why we think it's appropriate for a, a very low-dense rural residential designation.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Commissioner Grace, any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions or comments. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Alsop?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fighter?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Um, appreciate that, and we do need to do a, uh, public hearing on this one as well. So I'm gonna open that public hearing and, uh, ask, have we received any questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay. Thank you. With no comments or questions from the public, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And before I request a motion, uh, I'd like to ask if there are any further question or comments from Commissioners on the proposed Minor General Plan Amendment Case GPA 20-03 before I request a motion. Uh, again, we're gonna start with Commissioner Otlowski.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Patterson?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Nothing here, Chair. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Grace?
Nothing additional.
Commissioner Alsop?
No further comment.
And Commissioner Fighter?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, at this time, I'd like to request a motion. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, this is Clay. Uh, most recommend, our motion that we recommend approval of case GPA 20-03 to City Council.
Thank you. Commissioner Alsop has a motion on the table to, uh, recommend approval of case GPA 20-03 to City Council. Is there a second?
Commissioner Grace, I second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace has seconded the motion. All right. We have a motion and a second. I'm gonna ask a vote at this time. Uh, Commissioner Otlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsop?
Yes.
Commissioner Fighter?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. And that passes unanimously, 7-0. Thanks, everyone. Uh, we're gonna move next to reports from staff. Does staff have anything to report tonight?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, um, before I move to the, uh, upcoming meeting schedule, I do wanna take this opportunity just to thank all of the Commission members for your input and your guidance during the general plan process. So tonight culminated the end of the, the last refinements that we're looking at for the general plan. We intend to put this on the ballot in November. As you know, this has been a, a long-time process, going back probably two or three years ago. So I, I wanna thank you for your time, your attention, and your, and your input into this process. So thank you very much for that. In terms of the upcoming schedule, um, we do not have a, uh, April 16th meeting that's been canceled. May, we're not sure. We're not sure if we have a meeting on it. It depends if we have some items, and certainly, given the uncertainty of today's times, whether we'll have a meeting in person or remote. So who knows on that one? So stay tuned. Um, but as we, as we sit today, uh, we don't have a meeting scheduled for May. We'll let you know if that changes. And with that, I have no other comments.
Great. Thank you very much for your report. Uh, reports and updates from Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, Commissioner Otlowski, do you have any, uh, reports or updates for the Commission?
No, not this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson?